I'm sure there's mega thousands of dollars ever. Gretkin.
To divide the space.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott. Waters.
Here.
And we have a silent prayer followed by the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sam Wagner. Is Sam here?
Yes, I think so. Hey, Sam.
Sam, please come to the podium. Sam Wagner, Mid-American Energy Business and Community Development Manager. We'll present a city with a check. Trees Please Program. Kelly Bach, Parks Maintenance Field Supervisor, will be accepting the check on behalf of the city. And Sam, I left it to you to announce the amount.
Oh, oh, that's good.
For the Trees Please Program.
Yeah, I may, I may have conveniently left that out just in case, you know.
Oh, it's, it's in here. I'm just, I don't want to steal your thunder on this.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And yeah, it's, it's good to be with you here today. And it's good to see everybody again. And especially under these circumstances. So I'll keep my, my remarks extremely brief. But first, I'd just like to thank you for putting me first on the agenda. But no, we've been partnering with the City of Sioux City for quite some time on the Trees Please Program. And it's, it's a, I think it's a great partnership that has kind of evolved over the years. And the work that the City of Sioux City has done in using these funds to, to plant trees helps with beautification, helps with energy efficiency, and just makes our community better. So with that, you know, it's really nothing, you know, nothing more I can really add to this other than to present a check to Kelly here in the amount of $7,200.
Wow.
That's good.
Right, thank you.
Dan, do you want to put a picture with them standing in front of us?
Would you like to move this back a little bit?
Oh, you can have counsel behind you.
Mr. Gretkin and also some under Shaner and Mr. Waters.
Yeah, no, I don't. Yeah, right. Come on now, there you go, Kelly. Get down a little bit. That should, that should work fine.
There we go.
That should work. I'm out of it.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Congratulations. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you so much. That's awesome.
Kelly, you gonna give that check to the city manager?
Yeah, right? Kelly's like, I'll see you at the bank.
You can't tell when I'm joking and not with this mask on. I'm sorry. All right.
Thank you, Sam. Thanks, Kelly.
We have two proclamations to read. The first one, whereas according to the CDC, one in eight couples have trouble getting pregnant or sustaining a pregnancy, infertility affects women and men equally and does not discriminate based on race, religion, sexual orientation, marital status, or socioeconomic level. And whereas all people challenged in their family building journey should have access to adoption and medical treatments such as in vitro, fertilization, and third-party reproduction. And whereas cost and lack of insurance coverage are often barriers for many to access the family building option they need, raising awareness of infertility and the barriers faced by many is the first step to removing these barriers. And whereas Sioux City, Iowa joins, resolve, the National Infertility Association, dedicated volunteers, healthcare professionals, and members of the infertility and family-building community by participating in this promotion. I therefore, I Dan Moore, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the mayor and city council hereby proclaim April 18 through the 24th, 2021, as National Infertility Awareness Week in Sioux City, Iowa. And we'll get this sent out to the appropriate parties. Second proclamation, whereas alcohol is the most commonly used addictive substance in the United States, and excessive drinking is responsible for more than 4,300 deaths among underage youth each year. And whereas kids who have conversations with their parents and learn a lot about the dangers of alcohol and drug use are 50% less likely to use alcohol and drugs than those who don't have such conversations. And whereas 14% of high school seniors in our community have used alcohol in the past 30 days, and 7% have consumed five or more drinks in a row. Now therefore, I Dan Moore, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the mayor and city council, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Sioux City, Iowa, and call upon all citizens, nonprofit organizations, parents, youth, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, healthcare agencies, and schools to be somebody and join together to prevent alcohol abuse among our youth and adults. And we'll get this sent out to the proper parties as well, okay? Next, we have an interview for the Environmental Advisory Board, Dr. Brandon Bosch. Besch. Sorry, I like to pronounce names correctly. So Dr. Besch, thank you for making this application. And tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
Yeah, so I am an Assistant Professor of Philosophy at Morningside College, soon to be Morningside University. I have been there for two and a half years now. And my background, my, my main area of research is in the philosophy of science, but I also do work in ethics and action theory. And one of the interesting places that these overlap is in environmental philosophy, which is an area that I've done some research in the past. And so I think that, that one of the things that I could bring to the Environmental Advisory Board would be some expertise on environmental philosophy.
Any questions for Dr. Besch?
No, none. Thank you for applying. And you certainly, your, your application indicate that you'd be a great addition to the committee, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I would just say thank you. I think you'd be an asset to the committee. I mean, I've worked with you at Morningside and appreciate your enthusiasm for the topic. I would just, any, any opportunity to engage college students at the city level and with these types of programs, I think are extraordinarily, not only impactful, but also important. I mean, you saw the trees, you know, the money that was just awarded here. So the utilization of those funds, the expansion of trees, and the beautification of our city, I mean, as well as improving like the drainage projects and other things that we currently have going, I think will really be essential moving forward. So I, I appreciate your leadership on that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the time to meet with us. We appreciate your being here.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda. Items three through 14E constitute a consent agenda. Items pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. Any person wishing to speak on an agenda item may come to the podium at the time the item is being discussed. Any person wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at the end of the regular meeting during citizen concerns. Please fill out a citizen concern card found outside the chamber's entrance and give it to our city manager who is over here to my right. All speakers shall state their name and address for the record and then provide their statement. I will move the consent agenda. Second. Item, Agenda Item Three, reading of the April 12th City Council minutes. Agenda Item Number Four, Resolution Amending the Position Classification Manual and Salary Schedule by Adopting an Updated Job Description for the Risk Manager Coordinator Position. Agenda Item Five, Actions Relating to Finance. 5A, Resolution Approving Advances of Funds for Repayment from the City's Urban Renewal Tax Increment Revenue. 5B, Resolution Declaring an Intent to Issue Debt to Reimburse the City for Certain Original Expenditures. Agenda Item Six, Actions Relating to Grants. 6A, Resolution Approving CDBG Coronavirus Small Business Grant Funding Awards. 6B.
I, I had one thing on A.
Yes, sir.
Jill, I just wanted, and I should have brought it up earlier today when we were chatting, so I apologize. I noticed that there were 78 applications, and I think only 40 were able to be awarded at this time. The only thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention, we were talking earlier about excess funds and different things that are becoming into our community. I would just hope that we would keep these applications and keep that in mind if other monies would become available, just so we could support them. I think we have a great list of businesses that are going to really be impacted from this, so I'm excited. But I also understand that there are probably almost 40 that weren't able to receive funding for whatever reason, whether they would qualify, whether they would get some, even if we have more money available, I understand. But just knowing that we should probably keep that front of mind.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Alex, is that something you think we might take up next week?
Exactly.
If we discuss the funding. So Mr. Padmore, will you be sure to get that list for us? Thank you. Agenda Item 6B, Resolution Authorizing Neighborhood Services to Accept a MURD Spring Grant to Fund a Mural on West 7th Street. Agenda Item Seven, Actions Relating to Street Closures. 7A, Resolution Temporarily Closing Various Streets and Alley's on May 23rd for the Bishop Healan High School Outdoor Graduation Reception. 7B, Resolution Temporarily Closing Various Streets September 2 through 5 for Art Splash. Agenda Item Eight, Actions Adopting Construction Documents. 8A, Resolution Adopting Plans and Specs for the Bridge Repairs Project. 8B, Resolution Adopting Plans and Specs for the Water Main Replacement Project, South Cornelia Street. Agenda Item Nine, Actions Relating to Agreements and Contracts. 9A, Resolution Recertifying SULAND Habitat for Humanity as a Community Housing Development Organization. 9B, Resolution Authorizing a Funding Agreement with SULAND Habitat for Humanity to Provide Downpayment Assistance in Construction of a Condominium at 3201 Parkview Boulevard. 9C, I need a motion to delete Agenda Item 9C. I'll make that motion to delete. Second.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Agenda Nine, I didn't read the item though, did I? 9C was Resolution Approving a Contract with USP Technologies to Supply Collection System Odor Control Services. We just deleted that item on a 4-0 vote. 9D is Resolution Approving Addendum Number Four to the Collection System Odor Control Services Contract with USP Technologies. And I will move to delete that item as well. Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye. So Agenda Item 9D is deleted on a 4-0 vote by the council. Item 9E, Resolution Approving Amendment Number One to the Consulting Services Agreement with West Plains Engineering for the City Hall Interior Lighting Upgrade Project. 9F, Resolution Approving Renewal Option Number One with Bound Tree Medical for Medical Equipment, Supplies, and Pharmaceuticals for the Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services, and Fire EMS Divisions. Agenda Item 10, Actions Authorizing Payments. 10A, Resolution Authorizing Payment to Nelson Commercial Construction for the Airport Terminal Renovation Project. 10B, Resolution Approving Fund Transfers for the Month of March. 10C, Motion Approving Total Payments Issued for March. I will make a motion to amend the amount to correct that amount to $13,287,444.39.
It's amazing just how much one digit matters, huh? I second that.
Thank you.
Waters.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Agenda Item 11, Actions Relating to Property. 11A, Resolution Proposing to Sell Property Abutting 1445 Burton Street, Petitioner Steven Benford and Javier Macias Martinez. 11B, Resolution Proposing to Sell Property Abutting 1401-1407 Harris Street, Petitioner Peggy Law and John Kiosa. Agenda Item 12, Actions Relating to Assessments. 12A, Resolution Fixing the Amount to Be Assessed Against Private Property Adopting and Leaving Schedule of Assessments for the Sidewalk Snow Removal Program. 12B, Resolution Fixing the Amounts to Be Assessed Against Private Properties Adopting and Leaving Schedule of Assessments for the Nuisance Abatement Program. Agenda Item 13, Applications for Beer Liquor Licenses. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. And Agenda Item 14, Receipt Amendment. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. This is the end of the consent agenda. Any citizens to be heard on any of those items? There being none, we will, thank you for reminding me, lock in, lock in our vote.
One, one other thing I wanted, thank you. I just wanted to say, Todd, since I see in the audience, I just wanted to say I'm excited about the opportunity for Art Splash to be downtown. I'm looking forward to that. I think that it could be a logistical, you know, a little bit of a situation. It's going to take some, some definitely thinking out and outside of the box, but I'm really excited about that opportunity. I would also encourage you as a member of the council, Julie as well, that sit on the Downtown Partners Board, to just make sure to work with them and collaborate. I'm sure you can come up with some creative ideas, how to engage the business community, as well as, oh, Aaron, I didn't see Aaron here too, as well, yes. So I'm excited to see both of you and to be able to welcome it back downtown. I'm, I'm really looking forward to that. So any collaboration, anything we can do to get more people, you know, not only enjoying Art Splash, but enjoying our restaurants, shops, anything downtown, I think it's going to be a win-win. So I think that's, it's something that's exciting. At least I'm looking forward to it. I hope you are as well.
Yeah, we genuinely are very excited about this. And as much for the Art Center, as for the greater downtown, but we think it's going to have a lot of ripple effects bringing something like this downtown.
Yeah.
And we have been working with Downtown Partners already, so.
Good. I figured as much. I just wanted to, yeah, I figured as much.
Yes, yes. It's very exciting. We've wanted this for a long time. And so now to actually be able to work on it and get it all done, it'll be a lot of fun.
Cool. Well, thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Could I have you both state your names and your position for the record?
Yes, Todd Behrens, Art Center Director.
Aaron Weber-Drezen, Development Coordinator, Art Center.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
And Aaron, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. With the mask and everything, it's like, jeez, I don't notice or recognize anyone.
The consent agenda passes on a vote of 4-0. Thank you, council members. We'll move to the hearings. Agenda Item 15, Hearing and Resolution Approving Plans and Specs for the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project Phase Two. I'll move approval. Second. Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Hey. No one? The hearing is now closed. Sure. It's on Agenda Item 15? On the Riverfront Development? Okay. Are you, are you here for citizen concerns?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make sure that I get, I get you. You're welcome. Make sure you get, you get your attention. I just want to say, I've already closed the hearing, but I did want to say, I mean, this is really an exciting part of the Phase Two that's going to be happening. And it's, and we'll start seeing, I mean, we already see a lot of things going on down at the Riverfront Development, but this is, this is really going to add to it, so.
Even though we've already voted, Angel, would you want to just say a couple of words about the, kind of the big ticket items that we're going to see on this next phase?
Sure. So Angel Wallace, Parks and Recreation Manager for Phase Two of the project, which will start primarily a little past the dog park from Phase One. And it'll include the two major pavilions is what we have on our bidding documents as alternates at the Pavilion at Virginia Street and the Pavilion at Floyd. We'll also have amenities that go along the, to the Floyd River. There'll be improvements to the existing former casino elements that will provide additional overlooks. So it should be a very great opportunity to create the amenities to the park that will draw people there.
People will really be able to see some progress because they'll actually see some structures going in.
Absolutely, yes.
More than just the grading. That's awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also the water feature will be a part of that Phase Two as well.
The what will be?
The water feature.
Oh, yes, mhm.
The projected completion dates the end of 2022, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, for both Phases One and Two.
Yep. I'm really excited about the three river overlooks. I, I think we'll really take advantage of those. And it'll just, it'll be very nice.
Yeah, they'll be great attractions, for sure.
Thanks, Angel.
Thank you so much, Angel.
Thanks, Angel.
Agenda Item 15 passes on a vote 4-0. Agenda Item 16, Hearing and Resolution Approving Plans and Specs for the West 17th Street Water Main Replacement Project. I'll move that item. Second. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone to be heard on Agenda Item 16? The hearing is now closed. Agenda Item 16 passes on a vote 4-0. Agenda Item 17, Hearing and Resolution Accepting the Proposal of John and Louise Roach for Land in the Teton Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that item. Second. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone to be heard on this item? There being none, the hearing is now closed. Discussion, Agenda Item 18, Resolution Approving Renewal Option Number Two of the Towing and Wrecking Services Contract with Meyer Towing. I'll move that item. Second. Anyone here to appear on that item? Okay. We'll vote on that one. Right? There's no, it's not a hearing. Okay.
And just to be clear, this is the last renewal, right, as far as the extension? Just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Before I go, before it's ready.
And that passes on a 4-0, one vote. Thank you, council members. Now Agenda Item 19, Citizen Concerns. Now you're, you're on. You'll speak into the mic since we're wearing masks.
Yes, sir.
We'll appreciate that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We need your name and address, please.
Andrew Velasquez, 723 Jones here in town. I'm just bringing a concern about housing here in, like, as far as like apartment dwelling. I wrote something to Senator Ernst about, but maybe it'd be more appropriate to bring here. I don't see it's fair at all. I mean, it's not fair at all to have people living with smokers who are non-smokers. And many people are vulnerable in those situations, of course. And, yeah. I'd like to go into detail about that, of course, but pick the right words. There's just not much to say about it other than that, though.
And are you saying as far as in common spaces and stuff like that of the apartment dwellings?
Yeah, like apartment dwellings. Like, I'll just use my own example that'll keep me speaking straight, is that I'm on Section Eight housing and people are throwing cigarette butts in the hallway and then smoking in their complex. And it comes into my building and I'm supposed to like invent some way of preventing that, which is, you know, that's not my obligation. I have my human rights, you know?
Yeah.
And, and people like myself, you know, it's like, I'm, I'm vulnerable in that situation. I don't, it's not like, you know, I'm stuck where I'm at and, and other people are worse off than me. I, like, I have big goals and aspirations. That keeps me like straight-faced, out the door, getting things done and looking for something. Whereas, you know, I could see like if I was, you know, somebody with a handicap, that it was like, I'm just going to accept this as a part of life. And that's, that's small tragedy, you know?
What, what building do you live in?
The 723 Jones across from Mercy Parking Lot over there.
Okay.
So Mr. Padmore, is there a staff member that we could refer him to, to help, or to at least give him some guidance?
Actually, Tom Bates is a Section Eight representative. And I was going to suggest that, that Tom would.
I know Tom.
You know, Tom, Tom would certainly know about it. And I'm sure they would follow up on cigarette butts. I don't know what the rule is with respect to being able to smoke in the apartment complex or in your own individual department.
Sure, that's.
But Tom would be a great.
I know very well. I've gone, and I've gone to the police, I've gone to Section Eight. I've gone to all avenues. Like I said, I wrote to the senator to get state law changed because the state law is that you're allowed to smoke in your own private apartment complex, but.
Did you talk to Tom?
I talked to Tom. I've talked to my caseworker. I've.
Yeah, I think Tom would be the right individual. And I don't think they're taking walk-ins yet, are they? In, in, no. So you need to call them on the phone.
Well, and it sounds like you did talk to them. It's just state law allows them to do that, right?
Yeah, so that's why I said maybe it'd be more appropriate to get locally done. We could be like taking the first steps in some, a policy that makes sense.
With respect to the littering, Tom could probably have an impact on that as well, so.
And if it is state law, I would recommend reaching out to your representatives, you know what I mean? Like, I'm trying to think of who covers downtown, do you know? Does anyone know who downtown would be? You could look that up, be able to enter your, enter your address on, what is it, the Iowa State website, the Secretary of State's website. And then you can find the name of your rep and your senator here. And so Joni Ernst would obviously be the state senator or national. We're talking about state. So find the local one and maybe write them a letter. So if it's state law, they could at least introduce something.
I appreciate that. Listening intently, so I was forgetting what I had to say. But yeah, I, I just, when I spoke to it, it's just kind of gotten brushed off so, so much as such a, oh, that's just the way it is. And I, oh, that's, it's like, they should have it be in Section Eight that, do you, they ask you, do you smoke? And you have a million questions that you fill out to get approved and then just stay on. You go through all these questionnaires. It's like, it'd be nice if they were purposeful and like, oh, he doesn't smoke. He probably doesn't want to live with smokers. And then it gives smokers the opportunity to see how they live when they're all living together because it gets pretty ridiculous, you know?
Maybe lean towards more of a, like a non-smoking rental building and then a, okay.
That's where I would start. Secretary of State's website. And just find your local rep or senator.
You said, um, local senator. I've never even heard of that. What do I look for, Alex?
Does anyone know who, I'm trying to think of who it would be. I don't know.
Talking about a state.
I looked it up under the downtown zip code.
Yeah.
Iowa Senate District Seven is Jackie Smith.
Jackie Smith.
And Representative Chris Hall.
Chris Hall.
Okay.
So Jackie Smith and Chris Hall would be who you'd want to contact since we're dealing with state law. They serve in the Iowa Legislature.
Appreciate it.
In, in Des Moines. But contact them with those concerns, voice them the way you did, and see what, see what ideas they have since we're dealing with state law. And I think you'll get some direction from them.
Thank you.
And if you, if you hang out later, either Haiti, Haiti or myself, we can give you their email address.
I'll do that.
Okay.
If you could share your name again, I'd be happy to call Tom Bates in the morning and have him follow up with you.
Andrew Velasquez.
Andrew?
Yes, sir.
Can you spell your last name for me, Andrew?
V. A. L. A. S. E. K.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, too.
Yeah, and I appreciate the roadwork getting done. Because the last time I was here, we were talking about that, so. That's blacktop. Thank you.
That's getting worked on. Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns? Council concerns? Mr. Gretkin?
A, a couple of quick issues I just wanted to share. I attended the Westside Coalition Meeting last Thursday night. At, at their request, there was an issue dealing with grass and weeds on the west side in an apartment complex next to a residential area. And I think that is being worked on. But one of the issues. But, one of the issues, that was the reason I got there in the first place, but there were several other issues. One was, came from Mike Brandhagen and Mike is a member of the West Side Coalition and, and Mike, I think, has addressed council in the past, but he was concerned about the lack of sidewalks on Hamilton Boulevard, south from West First Street. And he's concerned that once the Riverfront Project, Development Project opens up, how will people walking from the neighborhood be able to get to the Riverfront safely? And there is sidewalks on the east side, but they stop at Triview. On the west side, from West First South, there are no sidewalks. And he's concerned about the safety factor and I, I told him I would share that information and see if there's anything that the city can do to impact that. And I don't know if there are any plans, anything that you know that.
I was going to say, I think Dave and I, and I don't remember if it was Dakin, have talked about this at length. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, the DOT said that they would connect sidewalk through there, but since the city, we didn't have any sidewalk connecting on the other side, we weren't going to put a sidewalk under the interstate, right? Since there was no, and I mean, then we would have had to assess those property owners to put in a sidewalk along that entire stretch.
Yeah, Dave, Cardy, Public Works Director, we have to go through the assessment process to get those property owners. We, we were at one point sending out abatement letters, but we found that.
On which side?
When's?
East or the west side?
When's the last time we went through the assessment?
It would probably make.
But which side?
It would probably make better for us.
Nineteen eighty's dump?
Which side was Dakin going to do?
I mean, I don't, I, I'm not saying it's not the right way to go, but I don't think the city has been assessing property for a long time unless we change that policy, but.
Well, we haven't gone through the assessment process. We were, we were sending out notices to abate as a nuisance and we, that was probably not.
Yeah. So I, I just wanted, I'm sure that you'll hear more in the.
So Dave, could you, could you, could you follow up with council with just a memo, what you have done and what's taken place? So we're all up to speed on that.
Yeah, I go back with DOT, but that's, the DOT didn't put them under the, because we didn't have connecting sidewalks, so they, they didn't, I think there's space for them under there, but they didn't run the sidewalks because they, there wasn't.
Because they would lead to nowhere, it would be a break.
Exactly.
Well, there was no connecting sidewalks, so they weren't going to connect.
Is it, south of Triview, towards the underpass, under the interstate, is there enough room on both sides or either side to put sidewalks?
I think, I think there's at least room on one side.
I think, I think on the west side.
On the west side you might be.
I think on the west side there was some, because I, I, I'm with you, Pete, and I, I would agree with that gentleman, I had that same concern. And that's when I called Dave and, Dave and Dakin and kind of talked about it and they would have been open to it, but, and then the other question is, okay, so if you're looking at properties that you're going to assess or try to put one on, I mean, it's a red-tagged property, isn't it? Or it's for sale now? I mean, the old roadway in or whatever it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know what we would do on that side because then you go up further and I think the sidewalks on the east side, right? I mean.
On the, on the west side, I suspect, you know, you can go south on Hamilton and make a right turn on the ramp entering onto the interstate. If the light's green the way you go, I mean, that could be a little.
It'd be dicey.
Yeah, it'd be dicey. The east side seems to be more because when they come off on the ramp, the exit ramp, they at least have to stop there.
Not really an ideal place, probably.
I mean, there, there's a lot of traffic and a lot of lanes.
For a lot of pedestrians to be walking.
But I'm, I'm with you, Pete, I thought.
How many pedestrians there would be?
Right.
And is that going to be one of the main, I'm trying to think, that's, is that one of the main entrances into the Riverfront?
Yes.
Into the Riverfront? So there will be a lot of pedestrians, possibly.
It's your only, your vehicle access into the Riverfront.
On the west end, yes, off of.
Yeah, on the west end.
Cars, for cars especially.
It may be better for them, I'm not sure how they, but they may have a direct path by going back to the east to Wesley Way and then getting up on the, on the walkway across the bridge and there are steps that go down and go, and avoid Hamilton altogether, but I don't, I don't know.
I see a second one in my future.
But I think it's possible, but.
Could you also coordinate that with Matt Salvatore? And just give more information for us, because we're not going to figure it out today.
No, we're not.
Then there was a gentleman that asked, thanks David, there, a gentleman asked a couple of questions, can care money be used on, towards mental health issues? I, I told him I knew water, sewer and broadband, but I, I didn't know the exceptions.
It depends on, on which out of care money is offered, but I believe there might be some opportunity with our CDVG related funding.
Okay. And finally.
Was he specific on that, Pete?
No.
Mental health issue?
No.
Very broad.
He, he's a resident of the near west side and he sees a lot of activity and I think he suspects that there are issues that need to be addressed and, and the funding, he knows, is, is always a hard issue to deal with and, and he was hopeful that maybe this might be an opportunity to be able to do that. Now, how that program would be presented, I'm not certain, so.
We'll discuss that next week, too, probably.
Yeah, probably, yeah. Are, are there next meeting yet?
Good question.
Yes.
It needs to be addressed.
And they even asked, he asked about, is it, is there an ability to use cares money to add to the police department? I told him I'd ask.
I don't, I don't believe so now with what we've been funding.
All right, thank you.
The two we got.
And then, um.
Start recruiting them now.
What else was I going to talk about? Oh, oh, I just remembered. No, I didn't. Give me, go ready head, Julie, and then I'll try to figure out if there, I know I had something else I wanted.
Sure.
I'm sure. Oh, wait a minute, I got it right here. I, I just wanted to share real briefly that Dan and I participated in a meeting with the, with three representatives from the Kosovo Compliment in Des Moines. And, and they're actually from, at least one of them was actually from Jalan, Kosovo, I believe, one of the ladies.
Yes.
And, and the whole meeting was based on an exchange of historical information and books between Sioux City and Kosovo. And then they also, we, we had a discussion along with Jim Jung and Jessica Johnson did a great job, too, by coordinating all of it and, and moving it right along and, and to talk about cultural exchange projects and what might be good for Kosovo and, and in the follow-up discussion later after we were done with that part of it, it really made it sound to me like students go to school and there's no activities, there's nothing, and they'd really like to develop a program. So it was really a good conversation, I just wanted to share that it, it took place and it was a nice meeting and I'm certainly, certain that they appreciated and, and we did too, so I think I'm done now.
Thanks, Pete. Shaner.
Two things, mine are both very positive. As a lot of you know, last week was Downtown Partners was, put together a restaurant week for local restaurants in the downtown area. I want to say thank you to them for hosting and for putting it together, it was a huge success. I know at my restaurant, we were very busy, we sold out several nights from the prefix menu that we offered. I know I saw tons of Facebook posts with people enjoying food. And once again, I think that what we did is we showed that this community has a lot of stick-to-it-iveness, we pull together, we support one another, we've got a lot of really bad you-know-what cooks in this town, so I think that's notable. I also wanted to bring up the fact that I toured our small housing little development over on Twentieth and Center Street last Friday. I posted a small video on my Facebook page, Julie for City Council's page, if anyone wants to look at it. I think there's been a little confusion that these may be the little tiny houses that are like three or four hundred square feet and they're actually not. So I did want to kind of clear that up, that they are an eight hundred and fifty square foot home with two bedrooms, bathroom and a lower level in the basement that can be finished. They are modern Prairie-style homes, they're very well-built by Kelly Builders and they have about another month until they'll be completed. I'm so excited to see them, they'll be on the market soon, they have to be appraised first and once they're appraised by a third party, that'll set the price. So we don't get to set the price, it's a HUD project. And I'm just so happy for it, as soon as these are sold, there's three more in the works, just a half a block or so away, they each get their own lot. It's just exciting to see some new housing and it's going to be, you know, very affordable, so maybe someone who doesn't have a home or someone who's just starting out or someone maybe who's even retiring that wants a smaller home, we're going to see some movement, so I'm really happy about that.
Great project, isn't it?
It is a great project.
For sure, yeah, I would echo some of, thank you, I would echo some of Julie's sentiments. I think especially that housing project is an opportunity, I think we need to, I don't know, hone it in, you know, and always improve these type of things. I think that if it was more affordable, I would be, you know, pretty ecstatic, but affordable nowadays is pretty, any house that you're building or doing anything with, the cost is well beyond what we thought and what we had hoped originally. But I'm really hopeful that we can continue to work on projects to get that housing price down, or at least be able to utilize funds like HUD to be able to drive that price down and make it more affordable for those to get their first home. I would also say that Restaurant Week was a great success. I guess I, as, as someone that was enjoying it, right, like you were in the weeds and, and yeah, definitely. But it's good to hear that those businesses were busy. We definitely want to continue supporting them, I think during the pandemic, we all saw just how essential some of those services are and how much we take for granted. So it was cool to have a week where we give back to ten local restaurants and really try to promote them and, and the quality food that they're putting out there. So I look forward to that next week, or next year as well. Hopefully it can be an annual event and just commend especially Grace for her efforts with Downtown Partners. Another thing I would share is Litter Dash is this Friday, this Friday, I believe it kicks off at noon. If you have not signed up, whether you are an individual or you as an employer and taking your group of people or your employees, I would really encourage you to do so, reach out to Parks and Recreation, go to the city's website, get more information. Like I said, it's this Friday, if you haven't RSVP'd yet or registered your group, I would encourage you to do so and say it's not too late. And the other thing, two things, a couple of things I wanted to bring up, number one was, I recently heard about the Zamboni ride that they did at Tyson Event Center. I heard it was a wild success, they sold out all of the available time slots and that we actually had a couple that he apparently is a pilot and loves driving a number of different things. He flew in from Wisconsin, he and his wife, so that they could drive a Zamboni.
That was a bucket list.
I thought it was pretty amazing, yeah.
On his bucket list, drive a Zamboni.
Commend Spectra for their creative ideas and being able to produce some original content like that. The next thing I was going to say, Heidi, I didn't know if Lisa was in today or if she was going to be with us today, but I think today was her anniversary of her twenty-four years at the city, so that was kind of cool. But I was just going to recognize her, so if you'll please pass that message along, we thank, thank.
She's celebrating somewhere warm.
Oh, yeah, there you go, hey, I would be too.
There we are.
No doubt. And then the last thing was just the frustration with trains, I received a complaint from someone in the community today, just frustrated with the delays that we experience in our community. This was specifically with downtown, she waited at a train for over thirty minutes, she said, and I understand, it's, she was on her way to work, she works as a partner of a law firm down there and sometimes you have clients meeting, you have appointments, you have things that are necessary and it's just, it's really frustrating. And so I reached out to Jill Wanderscheid as well as the city manager, I mean, we're going to continue to look for creative solutions, but at the end of the day, you know, we're at the mercy of the railroads. And I think that our community is built in a way that that really presents a lot of problems. I mean, you have the railroad downtown, you have the one, if you're trying to turn onto West Sixth, or onto Sixth Street to get over, I mean, there are just a lot, if you're trying to go to the new Expo Center, there are a lot of frustrations associated with that, so we'll continue to work with the railroad.
And unfortunately, the railroads are holding all the cards.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's not much that we can do.
There's not much that we can do to change it besides notify them and then they'll get the yes and understood and let someone know.
Yeah, appreciate you reaching out.
Right, right.
So I understand and the city staff is doing the best they can, but I don't think a lot. But that's all I had, yeah.
Alex, I had the honor of representing the mayor and all of you last week when the guard unit came home from Africa, ten-month deployment. And it was a welcome home ceremony that they had at the airport and then they did a parade going to Lamar's. And you know, they, they go to Africa to protect our freedom, to protect security, to do their work. They're gone ten months away from their families under a, under a pandemic, global pandemic situation. What really struck me is when the mayor of Lamar's had said and recalled and remembered, I remember when we sent all of you men, because I checked, that was all men, you know, when we sent all of you men ten months ago on June first to do this job in South Africa. And it just really struck me, you know, I was saying, because in my remarks, I made reference to the ten-month deployment, but to think that when you're sending them off and you're so, it's just, it was a happy, joyous occasion to see them home, safe and then reunited with their families. It was just really uplifting. And the, one of the guard unit members, and I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, but he was just telling me, you know, typically they would have the families come to the, to this, to the place, but if you haven't, I've gone to those before, but if you haven't had a chance to welcome home our guard unit members, please take the opportunity to do that. You know, this one was a little bit different because they were doing the parade to Lamar's, but with family members, you just, your instinct will tell you, welcome them home and then kind of get out of the way.
Right.
Because they want to see their family members. So thank you for that opportunity to, to represent all of you last week. It was just really a very moving ceremony and, and one in today's time that I actually, I really could, could use the, the positivity that came out of all of that, so thank you. I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Heidi, you didn't by chance get that, did you?
I do, I have it.